The meeting now is called Order. Could you please stand for the indication? In this meeting today, Lord, we ask you just come in. You have already prepared us. You've already schooled us on what we need and what we have to do to carry out the order of your business from day-to-day basis. So we pray now that as we go through this meeting, that everyone represented here and those that are watching will have a clear understanding of the jobs and responsibilities and duties that we as a council are doing from a day-to-day basis. We ask and we pray that everything goes well not only today, but tomorrow and any day afterwards. And in the name of Jesus, we pray. Thank you. Amen. Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Gales?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Page?
Here.
May I, I want you to approve the agenda, please.
So. Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Karen, we have special presentations.
Madam Mayor, you and me was slated to speak. I don't see her here yet, so we'll move on to the second presentation and then we'll go back to her if she arrives.
Okay.
So we will start with PR 32-24. Disaster Program Manager Jean Klein with the American Red Cross and Uriah Langmeyer, Community Volunteer Leader, are here to speak about building community preparedness for the community.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I had the opportunity to come here earlier this year to do the Red Cross presentation, talk about like the introduction to Red Cross, and now we're here for that next level. And we're bringing Jean here who's been the Community Disaster Program Manager for the past six years as part of the Miami Valley Chapter. And we're just going to give you a brief introduction to what we do in disaster services and how we take care of the community here. So Jean, come on in.
Thank you, Linda. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jean Klein. I'm the Disaster Community Program Manager for the Miami Valley Chapter at the Red Cross. What I'd like to do today is spend a little bit of time talking about building community preparedness within the Trotwood community. We would like to deliver services that support with advancing in the readiness of Red Cross clients. In order to do that, we would love to be able to recruit a Red Cross Trotwood volunteer to assist with the disaster relief and delivery of preparedness programs within the community. In addition, we'd like to provide more program presence with the participation of community leaders and volunteers. So both. This would give us an opportunity when we talk about the community leaders to, you have a huge sphere of influence and can possibly introduce us to your individuals that would be interested in assisting with Red Cross programs. In terms of highlights of some volunteer opportunities, there are two areas that I'd like to cover tonight at a high level. One is for disaster relief. And when we talk about disaster relief, what we're thinking about is responding to the most common disasters that we have. So that would be local, single-family fires. We have multi-family fires, transportation accidents, car goes through a house or hits a house, and then weather-related events. So those disaster action team members volunteer and they respond against these local events and they provide supportive assistance to individuals and families who've been impacted by the disaster. That would be the first area that I'd like to talk about, and that is our disaster action team volunteers. Secondly, I just wanted to cover some of our preparedness programs. And this is delivery of local and disaster emergency programs. We have a number that we cover and we would love to have volunteers to help participate in delivering some of these programs. The first one is our home fire campaign. And this is the installation of three smoke alarms and we provide education. So we go into the residence. It's about a 30-minute visit. We'll install smoke alarms where are needed. We'll make sure that they have a path to exit if there's a fire. So again, we help with the education as well. This is called our home fire campaign. The second area or program that I'd like to mention is we do some work with youth preparedness. So those would be the children that are kindergarten through second grade. So we go into the schools or we meet with girls scout groups or whatever church groups, whatever the situation is. And we prepare those kids to be able to learn how to prepare for disaster. And when I say prepare with paper, paper is a pink one. We kind of do a storybook scenario with them so they have an understanding if a disaster strikes, what do I need to do? What do I need to do at home? Then the next area that I wanted to mention, our private program is called Be Red Cross Ready. Be Red Cross Ready is our adult program, if you will. So we will go into different areas and present, whether it's Rotary Clubs, churches, whatever the need is within the community. And we teach them in terms of how to prepare for disasters as well. We can also present this program to, at the older level, within the schools as well. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on Handzling CPR. This is a 30-minute presentation that we provide and it's essentially the compression only. It's not, obviously, it's not a CPR certification, but it gives individuals the context in terms of the disaster. If a need arises, how to call 911, how to do compressions. So it's like the compression only. It's a 30-minute presentation. And we found that to be very helpful within the community as well. So that's, just at a high level, the disaster volunteer opportunities and the preparedness volunteer opportunities. Just wanted to mention a couple benefits of engaging Trotwood volunteers to directly serve the community. The first area would be trained volunteers to respond to the community needs. So this would be actual people within the community responding. The second area would be utilizing local groups of leaders and resources. Examples would be churches, schools to schedule, socialize and offer preparedness sessions. This also would provide stronger community involvement and participation. In terms of next steps, we would like some, we would absolutely love some suggestions in terms of where to begin offering programs within the community. What are your thoughts? What are your ideas? We would love to hear about that. We would also love to be able to identify leaders who want to become involved in the community preparedness. Again, this would be asking for introductions, thoughts in terms of who could be a leader that would be interested. And also disseminating volunteer opportunities, flyer to the Trotwood community in terms of volunteer opportunities. So what I have is in your packets as well, there are two flyers. The first flyer is Preparedness Opportunities. At a high level, it just gives you a snapshot of what those programs are. I touched on a little bit more detail. I get Prepare with Paper, Home Fire Campaign, the Be Red Cross Ready, Handzling CPR. And we also have something that we can do, something called Ready-Rating for Businesses to make sure businesses are prepared for disasters as well. The other flyer that is in your packet, at the top it says Turn Compassion Into Action. And this is how you can help in the Trotwood community. And this identifies the different areas that we talked about or that I mentioned in terms of the disaster action team and then the preparedness programs. And individuals who'd be interested in participating in those, again, we would love to have some community involvement with them. And that would be something we could disseminate. This is essentially how you would get started in terms of becoming a Red Cross All Computer. So, questions? I'd like to open up if anyone has any questions.
Council, you have a question? Yes. Ask a moment.
Thank you. Question. As the CPR classes, where are they held? Would you help? Where are they held? Where and how do we get them called in?
Yes. So that would be, we could do it at a church. We could do it at a school. We could do it at any pretty clear location. We want to identify who we want to teach Handzling CPR to. We would schedule that training. Again, it's a 30-minute training. It's proven to be very valuable and folks that go through the training class really enjoy it. So we do have volunteers that can come and teach that within the community. But again, we would love to have some Trotwood volunteers get engaged and be able to present. So that we actually do that at a number of locations.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm gonna, when I look at this, I think we have, I'm not quite sure. I don't want to say it out of turn, but I think we do have a Red Cross facility that we are working on in the city of Trotwood. And I think we're going to use, this here is going to be the location. Were you aware of that?
Yes. So Karen Burns actually had communication with Chief Packy. I don't know if I pronounced his name correctly.
Yes. He sits in right there. Chief, wave your hand.
Hello, sir. Karen Burns worked with Chief Packy and they looked at the facility to determine whether or not it would be conducive for a Red Cross shelter if we would need it down the road. And it does have all the elements that we need with the exception of showers. There are many showers, but there are some ways to work around that in terms of identifying a place where folks could go shower. We might provide transportation back and forth to wherever we identify and so forth. So there's some ways to work around that.
All right. I just want to make everybody aware. I want to make the council aware that we already have some things in place because that's really near and dear to our hearts. Let's go back to 2019 and you will understand.
Yes.
And I'm quite sure everyone does understand.
Yes.
But I think this is great. And we have an 800 number to read you personally.
The last page of the handout or place contact information.
I see. I see you've got the redcross.org.
Yes. So Lynn Thompson is the Executive Director. Again, I'm Jean Klein, the Community Disaster Program Manager. Rebecca Strorbridge is our Community Disaster Program Specialist. You can call any one of us. We would be more than happy. We'd be delighted to hear from you. We would love working with you. I also provide a hero with my business card. So it also has my phone number on it too. And feel free to reach out to me.
Okay. So I'd like you to know what would be our next best step. So you're trying to get volunteers from the city of Trotwood.
We would love volunteers from the city of Trotwood. We would also, and again, that would help us be better prepared if a disaster would occur. And we would also like help with identifying volunteer leaders that can help us assist as well. If there are some names or suggestions, we'd be glad to hear them. Happy you actually introduce those names to us so we can reach out to those individuals. We would be more than happy to do that.
Okay. So Council, we've got homework to do. So we have homework to do because this is just what we force them. What I like to do, they know how inclusive I am. I want everybody to participate. And they may know someone that we can come and talk to city manager because he doesn't run the city and we can work it through the staff. You know, so it's not going to be a burden on the staff, but we can all participate. And yes, Council, thank you for your presence.
Have you approached the local churches in our school district?
That is what we would like help from you all. On in terms of what churches should we approach? What programs are most important? Would you like us to deliver first? Which schools, if specific schools, they would like us to identify? Again, if you can provide us feedback, we would love to get started.
Absolutely. Okay, Council, I personally would be more honored to volunteer.
Oh, wonderful. I'm going to write down your name, Anna.
Yes, yes. I'm very excited. Also, wanting to make sure that we have an opportunity to connect you with our Economic Development gurus that are also here, the two gentlemen in the back there, with our businesses. We have new businesses in the area and I think this will be excellent for our new businesses to make sure their employees are prepared and safe in the midst of Trotwood.
Thank you.
And they're waving at you now. Do I turn them off? They're waving at you.
Love. We'll make sure it's there. Okay?
But thank you so much because this is very important and everything. You really don't know you need it until you need it.
And so you have the disaster.
That's it. That's what we had. So we know where to go from here, but we're ready to collaborate and make sure that we take that next best step.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just learned that Mr. Wheeler is unable to attend this evening, so we can move forward to the concierge agenda.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the concierge? So, second?
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
So does that move us to resolutions?
Yes.
R 24-99, a resolution by the Trotwood City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into an economic development government equity program project agreement with Montgomery County, accepting funds in an amount not to exceed $225,000 to provide funding support for Westrofo America LLC in the city of Trotwood.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Like the caption says, this is what about the city to accept $225,000 in annual head money from Montgomery County in order to support funding for Westrofo, a new manufacturing facility that's going up on Wolf Creek. And the executive director of Trotwood Community and带头的负责人 Chad Young is here to give us some commentary.
Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. You've seen these types of edge agreements in the county before. We've had these with many companies, like Gordon Foods, with Beyond Tag and others. And now this is our opportunity to bring these same resources which are coming through Montgomery County, through Trotwood, to the company as part of our incentive package for Westrofo. This has been, this was before we even knew what their name was. This was back when it was a confidential project. We made this application. It was actually multiple communities here submitted this and we would win Westrofo. Being the community that now won Westrofo and you can see the development is well underway, this funding is ready to go for us to make these formal approvals here today. This first resolution is related to the agreement between the city of Trotwood and Montgomery County for us to enter an agreement with them for us to be subrecipient and administer the funding to the company. And the CIC will administer that process. This funding is only eligible for fixed assets, so it can't be for equipment. It has to be something that goes into the physical building. It can't be picked up and moved. So it's likely to help with tenant improvements and those types of big costs that are going to be needed for this. And then it's tied ultimately to employment. So they will not receive all the funding until they commit all of their locaticals, which is 200 jobs.
Are there any questions, Council? All right. So I need a motion to approve R 24-99.
So move.
Second?
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
R 24-100, a resolution by the Trotwood City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Westrofo America LLC and authorizing $225,000 in economic development government equity program funds to be provided to Westrofo, AKA Project Swifty, for funding support. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Now, this is the development agreement between the city of Trotwood and Westrofo. It actually administers a process for funding and distribution of the monies. And Mr. Young is here if he wants to, he will follow up on that.
Thank you, City Manager. This is the final step. This is what we want to enter into with the company. So after we approve this here, I'll be sending it in for signature. We'll be putting this forward. We won't really start to administer this until they begin to do really improvements on the tenant side. Right now, what you're seeing is the beginning stages. But this project should be done by June of next year. There is a target goal of being operational in the building by that time. We won't be full employment by that time, but they're going to provide the end suburb running up really quickly. So we'll probably exhaust the funding from this grant probably in September of next year would be my expectation.
Council, are there any questions? Okay. I need a motion to approve Resolution 24-100.
I'll move. Second? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Karen, I know, do we have any old, old and new business? Oh.
No, we don't.
That's right. Okay. Do we have any comments?
We do have a few comments. First, we have Shane English. He is here to speak about a fence.
Good evening, Councilman. Shane English, I've been here in Trotwood for about 50 years and I love the city. I recently purchased another property here on the North Green Road and I was putting up a fence. And I was talking to a friend of mine who works for the Department of Transportation and he gave me the parameters about how far the fence should be from the street. What we forgot to take account of was the fire hazard. So I did receive a notice about the fire hazard with one of the posts being there, but I immediately took that down. But also, I got a cease and desist about building a fence. And that kind of hit me the wrong way because before I built my fence, I've seen other neighbors in the city of Trotwood who had fences up that was past the front face of their house and surrounded their house. So I figured, okay, it will be okay. And I was told that I need to go to a hearing for variance. So my question is, what is the variance? What is that, you know, how does that operate? And what should I expect? Because I wanted to put the fence up for safety reasons. Every year, we have a family event, you know, for dressing my son with a campout and I want, you know, they're going to be safe. There was a dog that got loose and got through the fence because I could not enclose the fence around my property. So that's another reason I have people putting trash on the property. People come and run the property, taking, you know, fruit off the trees and things like that. So that's why I want the fence out, you know, for safety reasons and privacy. But what exactly happens with the hearing?
Okay. And would you bring it to us? Then we know how to direct you on where you need to go. And I do believe that would be with the BZA. Could you please stand up, Tyler? This is Mr. Hawke. And he does, this is the gentleman that you would need to talk to. Because as Tyler Hawke.
I think it's going to be him.
And he can give you all the details that you need, that you would need to know. And I do believe, would that be with the BZA?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I tell you right there. Because as we up here, we do all the legislating and stuff like that. They really take care of those little intrinsic details. I'm not trying to just slap you off, but I'm just trying to give you the direction so we can get you help. Okay?
I just wanted to know that my mouth should not know.
No problem. We're both learning, so.
He did instruct me, you know, correct route to go, but I just didn't know what happened with the hearing.
Okay. He would be able to help you with all of that.
Of course. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for coming in.
All right. Definitely.
Madam Mayor, Taiwan Corbett is here with Goodwill Easter Seals. He would like to speak about some upcoming events.
Well, good evening, Councilwoman. Good morning. I'm just here, my name is Taiwan Corbett. I am the Community Engagement Director for Goodwill Easter Seals West Kansas. Fairly new to this position. I wanted to come, number one, introduce myself to everyone. And two, I wanted to kind of talk to you guys and let you guys know what events we have coming up. And we wanted to extend the invitation directly to the council. So the first event that we have coming up is Wednesday, November 6, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And this is an event for Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce. They're doing a business inclusion program breakfast. With that, we also want to extend it to all entrepreneurs and business owners in the area. And what they will be meeting about is learning about the construction and development projects and things that they have going on and how they can help with business owners and what they plan on doing. After that, on Thursday, November 7, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce has a Minority Business Assistance Center, which is the AMAC program event, where they'll be talking about opportunities for small businesses, grants, and things like that if they can find out more about and they want to present that. So we want to make sure that all entrepreneurs and all business owners know the information about that. And we would love for you guys to be here for that as well. Friday, November 8, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., Trotwood Chamber of Commerce has an annual dinner. So we wanted to make and let everybody know about that. And lastly, but not least, Thursday, November 14, we want to extend an invitation to not only you guys, but we want to extend it to the fire and the police department who will be holding a Friendsgiving event for our Goodwill Easter Seals All Club. And that is our youth program that we do every year. And we just want to highlight those individuals. It is a big thing and we do a Friendsgiving dinner for all of them. So we want to say extend that. That's all I got. Okay.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. The time, that is November 14, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I have a question. That November 6? Did I hear you correctly saying 6:30 a.m.?
No. 8:00.
8:30. Okay. I was about to say.
8:30.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My first bad feelings. I apologize. I apologize for that. But that, you said 8:30 to 11:00?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I think that's a purpose.
See, I just want to let you know, we are taking those.
Oh, we appreciate it. And we, and I also want to say from a business owner perspective, a resident of Trotwood and a youth that grew up in Trotwood, a bunch of Trotwood schools, I am very pleased. I'm very happy with the things that are changing in this area. It's been phenomenal. It's been phenomenal, my mother still lives over here, my sister still is here, and I have a property here as well, and I live here, so I am very happy with the changes that we see being made, and we just want to, I want to give you guys a kudos and take continued on what you're doing, because it's amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, you don't get away that quick. We're really a friendly bunch up here. Okay, we really are friendly. Our councilor?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No problem. I was just wondering if you need the RSP, because you said the 6 was a breakfast, and then the Trotwood Chamber is dinner.
Right, yes, no, you got the fine, we will have plenty, we already kind of set some things aside, just in case you were able to make it, so if you don't need the RSP, we just want you to be here.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
That helps a whole lot.
I have a question, are these all in the same location?
Yes, these will all be at the Goodwill Easter Seal building right now, I mentioned.
And Mr. Corbett, could you tell me, you gave me your title, because I want to make sure that you and LaBarbe.
He is the Director of the Association, I am the engagement, community engagement manager.
Okay.
Community engagement manager.
Okay, that's wonderful. Any other questions, Councilor Finley?
Thank you, Mr. Corbett, would you be so kind also to meet with the Goodwill Easter with our Red Cross representatives as well, because we would love to have that collaboration with Goodwill and Red Cross.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Okay, here.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add, the Chamber Dinner, there is a fee to attend, so I want to be sure that that's clear to everyone.
Absolutely.
I mean, you just, you just told us what was happening.
They didn't give me that information.
It is, it's a fee to attend, and we already sent it to the council, but if anybody else would like to know if there is a fee for that dinner, I do believe.
I believe after the deadline, it's $45.
$45, that is correct. That's, we'll pay $45, early burgers cheaper, $25.
Yes.
Okay. I'll ask you, anybody else have any questions?
I'm good.
You're welcome there.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem, thank you for coming here.
Madam Mayor, we have one more speaker, David Woods would like to speak about the care received at the dialysis center in Trotwood.
Hello, Mayor, I'm complaining about caring at hospital because they killed my dad because I was named attorney for medical, and he made those medical decisions, they don't notify me, Dr. Nixon, he didn't give affection, it ripped his skin apart, and he didn't give me any kind of pain medication at all, and I got doctors made for her.
What is your opinion on this? Nichols-Browne.
Nichols-Browne, that's what gave her that infection.
Seva?
Seva.
Abala.
Abala.
Nuash.
Nuash.
Macar.
Macar.
Halong-Tinay-Dreshaw.
Halong-Tinay-Dreshaw.
Orfola.
Orfola.
Scotty.
Scotty, and basically, I got trespass because they, my dad, they did a surgery the first time, the best one, kind of best one at Kettering Hospital, he's a preacher, and he was serving the Vietnam War, and basically, he got a bad sore, he cut on the damn screw in the pain, he said he wasn't done no more, he had dialysis out here at Trotwood to go to, and he's about to get released, then Dr. Nixon decided to want to do surgery again. Then I come in, my dad's screaming in pain, and I didn't know dialysis, he doesn't, he likes to do like my direction, I'm black, and he got blackish skin, all hair that burned up, I don't pay for medication, they all say, oh, your dad's going to die now. So, I called my sister, and I told them that I wanted to go to Myronville Hospital because Kettering Hospital would be inferior to how this happened. So, I left out of there, and then they go that night, the chief of police of Inwood stopped me, they said they got a call, called, said there was a threat made, basically, they had trespass at the hospital the next day, said I couldn't see my dad, and this and that and another, so Captain Perez trespassed in there, and then I got civil rights permission to investigate them now, and civil rights commission has called Kettering Hospital alive, because they said that the caller called Kettering Hospital about the threat made, and then they trespassed. Then Captain Perez, Kettering Hospital said, no, the Inwood police called them, said there was a threat. I went ahead and talked to the chief of police, tried to call that liar, and asked him, did I make press, you know, far, did Dr. Nurse get hurt, my dad die, he said he never told him that, he's going to talk to him. So, at that, I see my dad do a monitor, and I had, there was a white boy in the chapel, no, no, white in the chapel, and they see my dad, he was screaming in pain, he had a seizure, and there's a male nurse who set the whole thing up, seemed like a real nice white guy, next thing you know, he slapped my dad in the face, because my dad grabbed his arm, he choked him like this, he choked him right in the throat, and then they cut the camera off. I told Captain Perez about it, he didn't know about it. I want the CEO of Kettering Hospital to be fired for the fact that my lawyers and civil rights commission have notified him that there is a male nurse in here who's choking people, helping people, and I feel the safety, the Trotwood and all the cities that go to Kettering Hospital that L people get killed.
Mr. Woods, I thank you so much for coming.
I appreciate that.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't know this information unless you came through, but thank you so much for making us aware.
I appreciate it, I talked to the mayor of Inwood, but she's going to be our partner, Sergeant Cora, calling for the Inwood chief of police, you know, who I said, I've been the dating mayor in Kettering, so we're going to.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Here, are there any more comments?
No, ma'am.
I didn't, oh, there was a couple of comments, you have? Do you have anything?
I have no announcement, Madam Mayor.
Oh, please, that's, Kara, do you have anything?
Yes.
That's a respectful way of saying it. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, I have anything.
Okay, council members? You have anything? Okay, council, Gales? Councilwoman Gales?
I'd like to congratulate Dr. Moore, she got her doctorate degree.
I was supposed to say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you can say, I'm going to say it too.
I'm waiting, I'm just, I want to be in when you do it.
Okay, all right.
I think we're all good.
I think we're all good.
I think we're all good.
In fact, you, in fact, let's give her a round of, for those who do not know. She's trying to act humble, come on now, I love your work for that, and I am so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
We are so proud of you.
I so appreciate it.
And she is a doctor, now we have a doctor on the dance, so.
Also, Leo, are you going to talk about Beyonce?
I'm going to talk about Beyonce.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness, no, you before, you can talk about Beyonce, because everybody should be talking about Beyonce.
Yes.
You don't know what Beyonce is.
Sensation.
It's exceptional, it really is exceptional. We are, but you know what, Beyonce was, when we went there for, let me see, correct English, we attended the women cunning at Beyonce, and it was very enlightening, the factory is phenomenal, state of the art, if you have a chance to get over there and see that, I would recommend that, and you can see it for yourself, but anybody else want to come, I know who were there and everything, but I want to really emphasize this on Westrafo, I've got the correct pronunciation. Westrafo, at the beginning of this year, it was, it was not even thought about, they were through the process of elimination, in five months, I want you to take this home with you, in five months, the staff of Trotwood and the TCI, they were, they worked behind the scenes to make that come to fruition, that's unheard of, let me, I want a round of applause for the city manager, deputy city manager, the chief, everybody, I need Chad and Derek, we need a round of applause for them, because that's phenomenal. But to do that, that's phenomenal in five months, that's very key, timing is important for everything, that was my speech, okay? Councilwoman, you all have anything, I'm just jumping here, because I'm giddy tonight, I don't know why, because we haven't seen each other, and I don't know if you all can see it, but it's a lot of love up on this dance. It's a lot of love in this city, and we've been able to shine, only because we have that love, and it's genuine, the love I have in this city, I'm my favorite, I really love the city of Trotwood. Look, council, because, yeah, and guess, I'm sorry, let's give, you know what, everybody doesn't reach that age, I know you don't want to tell everybody, but we had a major birthday, and that is Juan Vaughn, had a, had a major birthday, October 25th, come on, let's give him a round of applause. He's a kind man in Trotwood, he really has, but I think he needs that round of applause.
I was going to ask if there's an age limit for the volunteer? Just as you know, tomorrow's a very important day, and the rules of council prohibit me from making a recommendation, I will not, but I will ask you to do, whether it's red or blue or whatever, please vote for your family, your community, the surrounding, all the United States of America, God bless us, and thank you.
All right, any other comments, so, council, no comment? It's on me, and guess what?
Can I?
I am so sorry, I'm looking at my watch, I'm sorry.
Just add to what Councilman Vaughn said, very, very important that we use our voice and that we vote tomorrow, but more importantly, that we stay in prayer, because we know at the end of the day, whatever, whatever way you turn, God's will, so please, everyone, just do your part, and God will do the rest. So thank you all for coming out, Mr. Woods, I also wanted to send my condolences to you for the loss of your loved one there, and then all of our other, our community members and representatives, I certainly appreciate you all taking the time to come out here. Lastly, city manager, if there's anything we can do, it's awful dark, the lights, I'm not sure if there are a timer, but the light, the light is super dark, yes?
Yes, ma'am, I thought about that when I came in too, and this is probably since the time has just changed now, I want to talk to our public works officials, and see what we can do to adjust the lighting.
Thank you, okay. I have a last word, and I would ask everyone to go out to vote, I want everybody to understand that when we sit in these positions on the dance, this is nonpartisan, I want everybody to know that, we represent everyone, I don't care if you're red, blue, green, orange, or purple, if you're a citizen of Trotwood, we represent you, and that's what we're here for. The thing about it is that, everything else that goes on around, it doesn't really have to affect us, what I'd like to see is if you're red, or if you're blue, that if we can get together and be purple and be happy, that's it, that's the ultimate, go out to vote, do your civic responsibilities. I have a meeting, I'm going, then we're going to go, I met with the Trotwood Preparatory Elementary School this week, there were over 300 kids, and I met at four different sessions, and we talked about civics, and what the responsibilities of a citizen is, voting is one of those four things, and they were really, I was really tired, I went to bed the next day, and slept for 24 hours, because they wore, those teddy bears wore me out, but all I'm saying is that, know that this council and this mayor, if you have an issue, come and talk to us, we're available, and we're unique, because in other cities, you wouldn't be able to contact us and come and sit in our office like you do here, that's unheard of, I bet you couldn't do that in Dayton-Kettering Centerville, I'd be willing to bet you you couldn't do that, but we are open council, and we're here for you, I'd like to end on that. If there's no, no other comments or anything, this meeting is adjourned.